Okay, good evening. Welcome to the October 16th Palmer Town Council meeting. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? First item on the agenda is visitors' comments for items not on the agenda. So anyone would like to speak? Chris?
Good evening, Town Council. My name is Chris Smith and I'm a resident of the town of Palmer. I haven't come to a Town Council meeting in a while, but I do watch them on TV. And I'm here tonight to say how disappointed I am in this body for the contentious tone of the last couple of meetings. It seems that some of you come very unprepared for the meetings, in that when our Town Manager raises questions or brings forward some very good ideas for the town, they're unprepared to discuss them. And instead, it becomes an argument. And I'm very disappointed at you as a body. Mr. McNutt has brought to our town a lot of good and favorable things. And I'm very disappointed that some of you look at that as if it is his issue, when much of it is your responsibility in the past. Many of you have served on this Town Council for some time. And I'm very, very disappointed as a resident that some of the things that he's bringing forward and some of you have wanted, yet you cannot describe your issues, why you want something done. And it's very disheartening and it's a precedent. Thank you.
Anybody else? Next is the meeting minutes from July 10th. Just had under discussion for updates on Bay State. You have Bay State Hospital. Bay State just as one word in this, so can you just put Bay State Wing Hospital, which I believe is what it's known as?
One word.
Bay State would be one word.
One word.
And then under for the alcohol licenses, the petitioning, the legislature, can you just add the full title of Luke's just for down the road, just so that if anyone's looking, they know what we're referring to. And I don't know if it's, I don't know what it's his exact-
(inaudible).
Whatever it is. Okay. Any comments? Have a motion to adjourn with amendments?
So moved.
Motion by Phil.
Second.
Second by Jessica. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? There's no old business on the agenda. Does anyone have any old business? New business. First item is acceptance of the bequest of the estate of Thomas Budnick. Ryan?
Yes. So, this is pretty amazing. Thomas P. Budnick was a, somebody who was born in Ludlow, lived in Ludlow, and, but recently lived in Holyoke and passed away in Holyoke. An apartment in, in an apartment in Holyoke. And the Holyoke Police gave to the Palmer Police, when they did a check of his apartment, his, some paperwork that I guess was addressed to the town of Palmer. Lieutenant Aaron Sullivan brought that paperwork over to Town Hall and gave it to me. I opened it up and found Thomas P. Budnick's last will and testament. Thomas Budnick was apparently very enamored with our public library. Some, we have some former librarians in the audience tonight, and they knew Mr. Budnick. He would call the library and ask some legitimate and sometimes less than legitimate questions. But he was always very nice and respectful to the staff. And like I said, he obviously loved the library. So in his last will and testament, he leaves the Palmer Public Library of Palmer Mass as the guardian of the person and property of his estate. He says, "I hereby make the following bequests. Everything and anything goes to the Palmer Public Library, Palmer Mass, Main Street, 01069." And so when I got this, I've never had to probate a will before, so I called the Town Council, the Town Attorney, and they have a wills and probate division, and they contacted me, and we started the process. It was a long process. Mr. Budnick passed away in May of 2022, and it was in July of this year that, that I was appointed as the executor of his estate. And then it was in September that we started to receive the proceeds of his estate. So just to give you an idea, we have in our possession a check for $3,322,276.48 that will go to the Palmer Public Library.
Wow.
I have continued to receive checks and proceeds and information about Mr. Budnick's estate. I've received six more checks. That total another about $40,000. I believe some more checks will arrive. And Mr. Budnick owned some land. The very funny part of this, or ironic part of this, is, is when he would call the library and talk to the staff, he would tell them that he owned land at the bottom of the Atlantic Ocean.
On the moon.
And he also said he had land on the moon, right? I don't think you can legally own land on the moon, so we're, we're not taking, you know, we'll see what comes about on that one. But he did own land at the bottom of the Atlantic Ocean. He has a series of land parcels in Harwich off the Cape. So we are working with some private investigators and some forensic accountants to continue to search for his assets and to figure out how we gain possession of this land and what we should do with it. So more information will be coming. But needless to say, Thomas P. Budnick has done an amazing thing for the town of Palmer and has done an amazing thing for the Palmer Public Library. So, I mean, I just want to say that he was an amazing man for the town and the library.
Oh, yeah. Should we change the name to the street going to the library, Budnick Road? You know, you, not jokingly, because, what was that committee to dedicate, you know what I'm trying to spit out?
Do we create an ordinance?
We do.
It was an ordinance to name assets.
Something, right.
So you could debate that. You could have that conversation.
I think that's a-
Maybe a way to the library.
Right. Something, I think something, I mean, I'd give him my left arm for that, you know? Something to recognize the man, for sure.
Yeah, I think that's a conversation we should have with the trustees.
God bless him.
We need one of those things, whatever we have with the moon and the stars and everything that people can bring in.
Same.
Yeah.
Great words. Answered his phone calls.
You guys put something together and-
Yeah, Stephanie at the library is.
Awesome. Nice work. And you're still working on getting more.
Yes, he still has more stuff. That's why I can't put a dollar figure on the acceptance-
But the moon is out.
Potentially, potentially. He, if you Google Thomas P. Budnick, a lot will come up. And one of the things that he was known for doing, and this gets a little kind of funny, too, is he was notorious for filing cases in court to claim that individuals should be allowed to have mineral, mining mineral rights on celestial bodies like the moon. Most courts dismissed it as bizarre, except for one county in Texas accepted over 60 of his filings. And when they were, when they were asked why they would accept his filings, they said, "Because we're a poor county and we need the filing fees." And that, so, I don't think he made it very far in court on his claims to give individuals mining mineral rights on celestial bodies, but he did make it somewhere in a Texas County Court.
Cool.
Anything else on that? So at this point, has the money been turned over to the library for deposit, or how is that?
Uh, no. So at the November library meeting, I will give the checks over to the treasurer of the library board of trustees, and they will do the formal acceptance. And then from there, they'll, you know, do what the board wants to do with the money.
Okay. Next item is Town Manager's appointment of Heidi Manarino, Town Planner. Sorry if I butchered your name.
No, that was good. That was great.
Okay.
So, our previous Town Manager, Linda Laduke, who served with us for a long time, took another opportunity in another community. Town planners are very short and much in demand right now. If you look on the Massachusetts municipal job opportunities, many communities are looking for Town Planners. The town of Ware is looking, has been looking for a Town Planner for quite a period of time. And so I'm not keen to keep this position open because we have a lot of projects, especially a lot of economic development projects on deck. I want to keep things moving forward. Linda Laduke recommended to me Heidi Manarino, who was our current Conservation Agent. Linda worked very closely with Heidi. Linda has said she would make herself available to continue to work and advise with Heidi. I'm confident that Heidi is a capable person, employee, that will be able to apply her skills and background to the Town Planner position. Linda Laduke herself started as the Conservation Agent and Assistant to the Town Planner when she began her service with the town. And, you know, as we saw, Linda Laduke was a great Town Employee, brought a lot of good things to the town, completed a lot of projects for the town, and I feel Heidi will be able to do the same.
Okay. There's no vote necessary. This is Ryan's appointment. Any questions?
I guess my only question is, what is the plan for the Conservation Agent? Because I know that is more than, you know, the hours that we even allot for that job. And so I would just like to know what the plan is going forward. So we don't burn Heidi out.
Yeah, no, we definitely don't want to do that. Heidi will continue to perform the role of Conservation Agent to make sure that office doesn't fall short in the meantime, but we're advertising right away for a new Conservation Agent.
Congratulations on your new role.
Congratulations.
Next is a citizen zoning petition for amendment to zoning additional cannabis retail. We have a public hearing and a second reading. So the, I'll do the second reading first. So this is, the maximum number of marijuana retailers in the town of Palmer should be limited to four at one time. So that is increasing from, from three to four. The purpose of this maximum number of marijuana retailers shall need to hold and maintain in good standing each of a special permit and host community agreement issued by the town of Palmer at the designated address for the relevant license types and be considered to quali- sorry? For one of the available four such facilities. Okay. And this was referred to the Planning Board, and they did have their public hearing. And on a three to two vote, they recommended that we increase the number from three to four. Okay, with that.
Are you also reading subsection G, or is that going to be section B? Because there were two different sections to be amended.
Okay. The second area is copies of all required licenses and permits issued to the applicant by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and any of its agencies for the marijuana establishment or RMD, including the Cannabis Control Commission and Department of Public Health, and any required license from the town of Palmer, including but not limited to a fully executed host community agreement for the relevant license and address of the premises. So we now have a public hearing. The town of Palmer, the Palmer Town Council will hold a public hearing Monday, October 16th, 2023, at the Palmer Town Building, 4417 Main Street, Thorndike, Mass, at 6:30 PM, amending the Palmer Zoning Ordinance, Article 24, Section 171-124, Marijuana Establishments and Registered Dispensaries, to raise the number from three allowed to operate to four. Anyone interested in being heard should appear at this designated time and place so designated. I will open the public hearing at 6:48. Any comments from the council?
Nope.
Seeing none, any comments from the public? Come on up. Just ask that you identify yourself, okay?
Hi, my name is James McMahon. This is the pilot.
Probably.
I think you can actually take the microphone out.
Perfect. McMahon is M-C-M-A-H-O-N.
And I'm the attorney for Green Gold Group and AdMass Four, which are the property owners and tenant of the facility in question, 1140 Thorndike Street, that has proposed this zoning amendment. What we're really looking to do here with this zoning amendment is reflect the situation as it stands today in Palmer. The Planning Board has issued four special permits, all of which have been recorded for marijuana retail. The town has issued and executed four community host agreements for marijuana retail. But the zoning code is very ambiguous and can be read to allow three, or can be led to read three operating facilities in any amount of non-operating or facilities in the pipeline. What we're really looking to do here is define exactly how a marijuana retailer is considered in the zoning code. The zoning code as written says that a marijuana retailer is an open and operating facility transacting the sale of cannabis. That is very far down the pipeline in terms of regulation, and it's also outside of the town's control. Once a host community agreement is issued and once a special permit is issued, the rest of the pathway to licensure is with the Cannabis Control Commission. And facilities can open, fail to open. I know we've seen in town a number of facilities that have obtained those special permits and host agreements and have failed to open, most notably the one right now on Shearer Street. So this avoids that situation by, instead of saying open and conducting business, the marker will now be possession of items that are within the town's control to issue, the host agreement and the special permit. The number four was chosen because that's how many are issued and active right now, and that just avoids any ambiguity. The Planning Board had said when originally these special permits were coming through that they had to take any applicant who came to them for a special permit, because under their reading, it was three open and operating, and until three were open and operating, they by law had to receive those permit applications, even though they may have not felt it was appropriate to do so. So this now makes a prerequisite of applying to the Planning Board to have that host agreement in hand. And the limiting factor can be whether or not Ryan, and his sole and absolute judgment on that side, wants to issue the host agreement or not. So it really now says, oh, sorry, is it not your sole judgment? I thought it was. I've given you too much power?
So the Cannabis Control Commission has already amended all host, host community agreement language.
Right.
And as far as I understand, it's either already happened, or it's on deck to happen, that they're going to remove mayors and managers from having host community agreement issuance authority. It may not remain with managers or mayors.
Yeah. So we're waiting to see what exactly the final language of the bill is. It's now with, as I understand it, the Attorney General for review. At this point, it is still managers and mayors to have that power. As I've, and I might be wrong, you know, I'm not saying I'm right on this, I think it was encouraging to set up a host community review committee that would review these as a committee, as sort of an objective viewpoint of the situation. But in any case, it comes down to how many that committee wants to issue. And that actually was the basis of that split vote from the Planning Board. They wanted to put positive language into this bylaw, or proposed change to the bylaw, that would limit the authority of the Town Manager and how many they could issue. We said that wasn't an appropriate venue to do that in, in a zoning bylaw, and that was the rationale for the split vote. It wasn't whether or not four should be allowed, it was whether there should be a positive constraint on the Town Manager as part of a zoning bylaw, which myself and the Planning Director did not think was an appropriate use of a zoning bylaw. So that, that was the split vote on that side. But anyways, what this really comes down to, it removes the ambiguity from the zoning bylaw. It allows the four facilities that have been permitted to open to definitively open, and it reduces liability for the town. Because the way the bylaw is currently written, it's a race to the finish line. In every other community that's had a race to the finish line, Grafton most notably, there's been litigation, and they've ended up allowing four, or five, or however many there were issued permits for at the end of the litigation. And it also removes liability from the town in terms of not being the full arbiter of how many facilities can open in the town, and puts all that power back in the town's hands. So we think this increases certitude, reduces ambiguity, reduces liability, and most importantly, is just an accurate reflection of the situation as it currently stands. Not looking for to expand, not looking for anything to change, just saying, four permits have been issued, four facilities should be allowed to open. And I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing at 6:54. Next item is resolution regard wastewater loan authorization, $2 million. We have public hearing and a second reading. So the purpose of this resolution is that the town appropriate $2 million to pay costs of designing and reconstructing the wastewater treatment plant roof, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, which shall amount, with which amount shall be expended in addition to the $2,868,000 previously appropriated for this project. That to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer with the approval of the Town Manager is authorized to borrow said amount under Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, 1, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. All or any portion of the amount authorized to be borrowed by this order may be obtained through the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust. And in that regard, the Town Manager and any other appropriate officials of the town are authorized to execute any and all agreements that may be required to obtain financial assistance through the trust. The amount authorized to be borrowed by this order shall be reduced to the extent of any grants or gifts received by the town on account of this project. This is also a public hearing. I will open the public hearing at 6:56. Any comments from, actually, I didn't read the public meeting notice, so let me hold down one sec. Let me just do that. Let me read the public meeting notice. Bob usually does all this. Palmer Town Council will hold a public hearing on Monday, October 16th, 2023, at the Palmer Town Building, 4417 Main Street, Thorndike, Palmer, Mass, at 6:30 PM. Let the town appropriate the amount of $2 million for the purpose of paying costs of designing and reconstructing wastewater treatment plant roof and four pump house roofs. Anyone interested in being heard should appear so, at the time and place so designated. So it's still 6:56, so I'll still open the public hearing. Okay. Any comments from the council?
I think I said enough. Last meeting, very contentious discussion.
I think at the last meeting, there was two things that were requested. So one was the original cost of the project was estimated to be the $2,868, which is the original borrowing authorization. And so we were looking for what happened, the bids came in, that added another $2 million to the project. And then you had also indicated at the last meeting that you were working on what the impact would be to the sewer ratepayers for this additional $2 million. So that's the second question. And then the third is, you had indicated that the town of Munson, I believe, had to pay, I think it was 50% or-
20%.
20%, okay, 20% of the cost. And I was wondering where that stands, because my recollection is at the last meeting, you weren't sure, and you were going to check into that.
Yeah. So you might have to repeat some of the questions. The last one, Munson, so I just was communicating with their finance director last week. They were closing their warrant for their town meeting on October 10th. So I know, I have to follow up with their finance director, but I believe they were putting their 20% on for that special town meeting.
So they haven't voted on it yet?
No.
How about Belcher Town?
Belcher Town doesn't have to vote, so they don't, they're a smaller partner. They don't owe us 20% of the project. They get billed, South Belcher Town gets billed the same EDUs that Palmer does. So we automatically get Belcher Town's capital improvement through their EDUs.
So we don't need anything in writing from them that says they're going to pay whatever?
That's approximately $50,000, and we, we get it from them. Let's see, what was the other? The differentiation between the original estimate of the project and the bidding came down to largely the cost of structural steel.
So $2 million more?
No, not exactly $2 million more. We're borrowing $2 million to cover Munson's proceeds just in case something happens at their special town meeting. The, the difference in the project is, hold on one second, let me go back and find that.
I thought we talked about other outbuildings and-
Yeah, we have to do the four pump houses. Those are ad alternates.
So those weren't included in the first?
Well, they were included as ad alternates. But, I mean, it was, it was basically always advised that we would do those pump house roofs, because they're also deteriorating, and we need those pump houses. It's all part of the same system. I'm sorry, I was trying to answer a different question, and I don't remember what the-
Impact to the sewer people?
The, what, the costs. So you said structural steel, and then you said there was other stuff, too?
Right. So we have, the demolition work is at $382,500, masonry, $21,000, metals, $144,276, thermal protection and moisture, which, that was one of the things that went up in cost. That's at 1.5, that's $1,528,875. Finishes is $607,500, mechanical, $17,500, electrical is $10,000. So the entire base bid from Greenwood was $3,370,000. And then the pump houses come to $409,000. So the entire bid with the pump houses is $3,446,000. So it's not over, it's not $2 million over. And this also has an 8% contingency, and we've already paid for the design and engineering and the construction phase. No, I'm sorry. We've already paid for the design and engineering of $202,700. So yeah, the total project cost today is $4,139,700. But that, like I said, includes Belcher Town and Munson's contributions to us. So the, the cost of the town of Palmer will not be $2 million additional.
But what happens if Munson, at their special town meeting, doesn't vote to support this? What are the, what happens after that hypothetically?
Well, they, we have an agreement with them that they owe us 20% of all capital projects, so they will have to figure out a way to pay us. I mean, they're, I mean, if their town meeting says no, they're going to have to- they're gonna have to figure out a different way, but they, they legally still owe us the money. Um, I, I think, you know, they, they've been eminently reasonable. Um, we've never had any contentious conversations. Uh, they understand the, uh, I meet with their, uh, sewer commissioner. Um, he, he, he clearly understands the project and he clearly understands the importance of, of this wastewater treatment plant. Um, so it, it's just been more, um, the finance director there trying to figure out what was the best option for Munson.
Cost to the ratepayer?
Uh, that I don't know yet. So I haven't, we haven't finished the rate study. Uh, that's still in progress. Uh, I have sent over all of this information to be evaluated along with it. Um,
Any idea when you're supposed to get that back from them?
Hopefully in a, like a week or two. Uh, yeah. It shouldn't be too much longer.
So, um, one of the, one of the concerns that I have is, see, you have an outline here of a financing schedule for going to market for this money.
Mm-hmm.
And my concern is, I don't see how this can work if Munson is also going to go to market for the money because we have to spend all the money. So if we borrow another two million dollars and then I don't know what, I don't remember, I don't have that in front of me. What was Munson's share of the project?
Twenty percent.
Eight hundred thousand, somewhere in that ballpark, I thought.
Okay.
Eight hundred and twenty thousand.
Somewhere in there.
So is it the other costs that weren't part of this four point one? Cause you had said like the engineering and the other things were already?
Hmm.
So is it total all in or is it just of this bid price?
No, no, total all in.
Okay. So if we go and we, and we borrow money and now, and we're not doing like a short term note, where you're looking to do a bond issue.
Mm-hmm.
And then they do a bond issue. So now we both are sitting on this pot of money that neither one of us, so they're gonna then pay us. And then we're gonna have, like, how are we working that?
I don't, I don't have those answers yet. I don't know if Munson's gonna borrow the money.
Yeah. So it, it just seems like our, this schedule is kinda tight to, without knowing what they're doing yet?
The schedule is incredibly tight. We've been trying to do this project since June of twenty twenty-one. Um, it was in the middle of COVID, so, you know, a lot of the procurement stuff was not easy to do or unable to do it. And then we had a vote that failed and we had to start the entire process over again. Um, in that meantime, you know, we've gone for sewer relief fund applications. We filed one on August two thousand twenty. Um, I mean, this project was on deck even before I became town manager in twenty nineteen. Uh, it, it's, it's a tough project. You know, very little maintenance has been done to these town buildings in the past twenty years. They are all starting to really fall apart and the roosters are coming home to roost. Uh, in the meantime, between, uh, two thousand and twenty and now, this project has become more expensive, much like almost every single capital project in the United States right now. Um, we need, we have a bid by Greenwood Industries. They are willing to hold that bid until basically the end of this year. We also have an incredibly tight timeline because there's, uh, two things that have to happen at the wastewater treatment plant that they can't, um, unplug the system. They can't have the elec, the electricity shut down. Uh, which has to take place for some of this project. And, uh, so we can't do the project during those times. So we've also been trying to align, um, the procurement to have the project calendar, be able to anticipate when those things have to happen, those processes have to happen at the wastewater treatment plant. Um, so I understand there's still a lot of questions about Munson's financing. I mean, I'm pretty confident that, you know, they will fulfill their end of the agreement. They've always fulfilled their end of the agreement throughout the, you know, many decades that the town has had the agreement with them. Um, but we will lose this bid if we don't move forward. And if we lose this bid, the project will yet again become more expensive.
And then what was the reason that we already borrowed two point, almost nine million dollars if the project hasn't gone forward yet?
I, I don't know about borrowing nine million dollars.
She said two point nine.
Oh, two point nine.
It says on here that we, two point eight six eight is a renewal, which leads me to believe that we already borrowed that money?
No, we have, so we have a bond anticipation note.
Right. But that's what I'm asking. Why did we already borrow the money for a project that didn't go forward?
So, yeah, that is, I guess, my, a lesson learned from me. And, uh, it's something that I'm going to apply to the centrifuge project. Again, you know, when I started here, I had, uh, the public works director and, um, folks saying that this project was ready to go. This is the most important project at the wastewater treatment plant. Um, and that, again, we had these estimates. We, we basically understood that it wa, what it was gonna cost. Um, and, uh, I thought it was buttoned up enough that we could go out and borrow the money because I thought we were just gonna do the project. Um, in retrospect, I would not go and borrow the money until, uh, I got the bids back. So that's what I'm gonna do for the centrifuge. I've already called the bond council and, uh, we are going to retire the centrifuge ban. And then when the centrifuge is fully designed and after it's gone out to bid and we know exactly what the project's cost is going to be, then we will start a new process for the centrifuge. Um,
But how, how are you gonna pay it off?
I'm, I'm sorry, what?
How will you pay that off?
Pay off what?
So you, now you're saying that you borrowed money for the centrifuge?
Yeah.
So in order to retire the debt, you would have to pay it off?
Right. We're, we're, the, uh, bond, or we, the bond council, uh, so the, it, from what I understand, the, any cost to the town to retire the centrifuge bond is only like twenty-two hundred dollars. You can use the, the money from the ban to, to pay it down.
Okay. Um, I don't, you might wanna confirm that because I, the
Happy to put you in touch if you wanna have a conversation with the bond council and myself.
I, I don't need to be, I, I'm just saying, if, if you, I don't know what the dollar amount is, but let's say you borrowed a million dollars. That ban is gonna come due on whatever date and then to pay that off, you need the million dollars, which we wouldn't have.
Yeah, I, the, okay, let me get you the answer from, um, Rick Manley, the bond council.
Yeah.
And, uh, because that's nothing of what, uh, the conversation I've had with him. There, there's really no impact to the town to retire the centrifuge ban.
Okay. Anybody else on the council? Chris?
My previous comments initially really is about this. And if you recall, I brought up this issue that caused the vote to fail in June of whatever year, I think it's twenty-two. We are at this point today in this mess and in fact, none of you even knew that the wastewater from South Belcher Town went to our wastewater treatment plant at that meeting. Yet I'm a resident and I was able to tell you that and you all kinda poo-pooed me off. So here we are again, still discussing the centrifuge. We're discussing what the impact is gonna be to residents. Where was your research? Where were you? Those of you who are on town council now, when our previous town manager and department head at that wastewater treatment plant did absolutely nothing to maintain it, that we as residents are going to pay in the future. I can bet you that my wastewater bill will be a thousand dollars within five years. Because people in your seats did not do their job to maintain our facilities in this town that Mr. McNutt is inheriting today. You are all responsible for that, every one of you. And there is no reason why a community needs to be here where only your sewer people pay for that type of maintenance. Because when you can't support Bay State Wing Hospital and you can't support our new economic development in town because you don't have the wastewater treatment plants, that's the responsibility of a community. And if you split that bill and you have the, the ability to do that as town counselors between residents so that I as a taxpayer and homeowner would get taxed twice in my sewer bill and in my homeowner's bill. And someone who has a septic system would only get paid for that facility for the roof because it's a building that we need in town. And I'm sorry, but you're all, all wrong on this. You're all questioning this gentleman over here for a lot of things when Mr. Blanchard should have been questioned. He knew and so haven't previous wastewater people come forward long before Mr. McNutt was here. So I'm very sorry that there's an issue in this meeting and the last meeting and the meeting before has all been contentious about this, but you all have a responsibility. You should be doing your homework as town counselors to bring the right path forward for this community.
Anybody else? I will close the public hearing at seven fifteen. Next item on the agenda is the acceptance of the town of Palmer Housing Production Plan. Ryan?
Uh, thank you. And I am inviting Community Development Director John Latour to come up and talk about the housing production plan. Thank you, John.
Um, my name's John Latour. I'm the Community Development Director for the town of Palmer. And, uh, the housing production plan, we've gone over in the past. I don't know if you remember one of the other times. This is the final copy that needs to be approved, uh, at some point. Um, the state is the ultimate, uh, end user of this. They use this as a guide for how we move forward with promoting low income housing and affordable housing in Palmer.
And I just wanna add, the, having a, a housing production plan is also a component of our master plan.
And it leads into, to future grants because they wanna see progress. And every day we make progress. That progress, we, they don't count. The housing rehab program does not, even though we service low income residents with that program and other, um, other resources, they took that off the table as far as counting towards our, uh, product, low, uh, income housing production.
That's, and that's another point. So it's called the S H I. It's your subsidized housing inventory. Uh, every community in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has a subsidized housing inventory. Um, you, the, the, uh, I guess, uh, state would like every community to be at ten percent.
Ten percent.
Uh, Palmer is under five percent, which is not abnormal. That's very typical for a community like Palmer. Um, where I grew up, the city of Pittsburgh is eleven percent. Um, so it's very typical that subsidized housing, affordable housing is segregated into certain communities. And Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty B, is sort of, was created to try to prevent uh, affordable housing, subsidized housing from being segregated into certain communities. But it's very difficult for a community to argue against a forty B project that is proposed to locate into your community. Um, if you, if you don't have a, a, a housing production plan, you basically can't make arguments. Um, so having this housing production plan, uh, will allow us, I mean, I'm not saying it would prevent us, a forty B project. I'm not saying we would want to prevent a forty B project. I'm just saying, for whatever reason, if we had issues, the housing production plan at least allows us to advocate.
Okay. Any questions? Do I have a motion to approve the housing?
I, I have a question. Yeah. Uh, the SMOC housing would be part of that, uh, low income or whatever?
It, it, it is and it, it's subsidized to some extent and that might make up the five percent. And the affordability, uh, for Palmer and other communities, you already have affordable units that aren't counted that are in the private sector. This is more like Ryan said, it has to be a, a public housing, uh, component or subsidized.
Landlords to become part of the equation here or?
We, we'd like to find somebody like the gentleman that funded the library that would fund a nice, a nice project here in, in, in Palmer and
And what benefit for the landlord would this be?
It's an investment and most of the, uh, the housing falls prey to financing. And in this environment where the interest rates went up and you can't, um, finance other than adjustable rate mortgage. And it's a year, three-year adjustable rate mortgage. And it's very, it, it's very cost prohibitive right now to borrow.
We're gonna have a lot more renters for a lot more years because homeownership, the goalposts are moving so far away from the average ordinary person. Um, so
Why do we have the, the homeless here if there's opportunities to get housing then?
Well, there, there, there isn't. Uh, most, uh, affordable housing, subsidized housing, um, housing authorities have long waitlists. Very long waitlists.
Oh, yeah, I know that.
Uh, and I think a lot, I mean, I don't want to conflate the issue too, too much, but, I mean, the state has been struggling with housing numbers, especially in the eastern part. Um, Western Mass were, were very rural. So I think the issue is more there, that there's just vastly more single family homes in, in western Massachusetts and not as many apartment complexes or multifamilies outside of Chickapee and Holyoke and Springfield and North Hampton and places like that, large urban areas. Um, you know, so, so it will be even harder to attract residents to western Mass if there's really only single family home options.
Yeah.
Um, so the creation of additional rental housing, both market rate and affordable, is very needed in this part.
Is, is there grants for, um, people to get their housing ready for that? Or for building? Any grants or is it just they have to get the money and?
Well, there is. So, so many communities, uh, support, uh, creating affordable housing. I, I, when I was a director of housing in another community, supported creating affordable housing through community development block grant money.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, there used to be a program called HOME, which was also issued through the federal government, uh, through HUD. Uh, unfortunately, HOME was discontinued by Congress. Uh, but there's still programs like community development block grant money, uh, that can be used to create affordable housing. Uh, yeah, I mean, there, there, there is money out there. There is different programs.
Like for you and I, let's say.
Yeah, I mean, I
To buy a building and fix it up for affordable housing?
Yes, there is.
Can I have it?
You have to apply for it. It's competitive.
I'll be in tomorrow.
As I mentioned at the last meeting when we were talking about Converse, um, there's organizations, you know, so, so disabled people also struggle to find housing. Disabled people, for the most part, are economically challenged.
Yeah, you have to do a, a special, uh, setup for them and you cannot have them all in one
Right, right.
Part of the building.
So there's grant money to create housing for disabled folks.
Yeah.
But you have to deed restrict those units to charge them no more than ten percent of their income.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, you know, the, the purpose of forty B is to create housing, subsidized housing, where folks would not have to spend more than thirty percent of their income on their housing.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that, that's sort of the financial standard, right? Even private, regular residential homeowners. You're, you're, you're supposed to try to spend no more than your in, thirty percent of your income on your housing.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's very difficult for most people. Most people
Nowadays.
Right.
Spend more than that.
Exactly. Right. Most people do. Um, so if it's a challenge for even regular, employed, successful people So if it's a challenge for even regular, employed, successful people to keep their housing at 30% of their income, it's extraordinarily challenging for folks that are struggling financially.
Yeah. They'll tell them to work every day like me. It's very exciting.
They'd have more Goldens.
I know, they're having Goldens.
Do you have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, guys.
Motion by Jessica is our second.
Second.
Second by Mark. Any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Next item is acceptance of the policies on street acceptance and betterments. Ryan?
Yes, so, well, it was, so at the last meeting, I presented this. You had asked me to separate it into two different policies. The advice from legal counsel was, even though that's possible, it's not advisable because then you'll have two separate policies that reference each other. So they advised to keep it as sort of one policy with two different sections to it. I did that. But this provides us with the mechanism for the council to accept streets and to apply betterments to any improvements to streets that you so desire.
I think the conversation about betterments, though, was that... So Chris, she just mentioned betterments for sewer. And so at large, having a betterment policy that can apply to different types of projects that we're doing, whether it's a private road project, whether it's sewer-related, whether it's, you know, not really applicable in Palmer, but like a water project betterment. So I think that's what we meant when we wanted two separate policies, was like a betterment policy that was, would cover betterments in general. And then, you know, this policy for private ways, they separate from that.
The betterment policy does that. It does what you want.
Any other questions, comments?
So, just a couple... So I agree with Jessica, but I understand what the attorney was saying as to have, like, betterments attached to this policy in particular regarding street acceptance. But I don't 100% understand, like, so for instance, if we weren't having that particular situation where we were looking for someone to accept, you know, do the work to have a street that accepted, and then we're willing to do a betterment while they bring the road up to the condition it needs to be, then we would need... So this ties just to that situation, correct? And so if we were going to do just a betterment, so for instance, the Lake Thompson area, where they're not necessarily going to bring their road up to spec for a private way to then be accepted as a public way, but they still potentially want to have a betterment?
It still does that.
Okay, even though it's under the policy to a petition to accept private ways as public ways?
Right, but the betterment language is sort of, it ties, it's going to be closely related to streets, but it's also separate that if you wanted to do sewer betterments, or, I don't, I mean, I'm not thinking, I'm drawing a blank, or at the moment, about different types of betterments. But it gives the council the discretion to do whatever types of betterments.
Okay.
You have more than just improvements to streets.
Okay, and then, there's reference in this policy to Finance Director, which last I knew, we didn't have one. So I didn't know if it should be, if that language should be changed prior to us adopting this. And then, at the last meeting, there was discussion regarding the percentage, what constituted a percentage of people to move forward in a neighborhood. And so this proposed policy has 75%. And I did research, like, other betterment policies in other communities, and it seemed that depending on the type of betterment, there's the potential that those percentages would be different based on what was actually looking to be done. So I'm just...
You want to propose a language amendment to the 75% buy-in?
So I feel like the, that the buy-in may be different based on the cost of a project, right? So if you were doing a sewer betterment, the cost could be $10,000 to $12,000 per person, just say. And so you might want a larger percentage of buy-in based on, unless, you know, based on that. Whereas if you have a project that maybe it's a few thousand dollars per individual. I don't know. I'm just saying that, I know that was something that the residents did bring up at the last meeting. So I did do some research on it, and towns are all over the place on that. But I did notice some betterment policies that were very specific as to, you know, if you're doing a sewer betterment, it's this percentage. If it's a road betterment, it's this percentage. If it's a sidewalk betterment, it's this percentage. So I'm just throwing that out for discussion. Because again, this, if we accept, based on what you just said, if we accept this current policy, the way it's written...
You have the ability to amend this policy right here as you sit?
No, 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 that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, if we leave this at 75%, then that would be across the board, every betterment, based on what you just said because you're saying this would then cover... So my confusion was whether or not this policy with the betterments is directly related to petitioning to accept a private way as a public way, and then the cost of that being borne by, through a betterment. So that, that's what I, that's what I was asking. But I understand what council was saying regarding, or the attorney was saying about, like, these two go hand in hand, so you would want it as one policy. I just want to make sure that, and I know that it's a policy, we can amend it at any point in time, but I want to make sure that if we were doing a sewer betterment policy, that that would then be another, another policy specific, or this betterment policy that's part of this ties across the board for all betterments. Does that make sense?
It does, yeah. I mean, this is the sort of first time... Yeah, it does. I don't necessarily have the answer to that because those were not questions that were posed to me at the time. And I've received zero feedback from the council other than to separate it. And then I sent over the rationale from the attorney on why they wanted to keep it together. And I've still heard nothing, so...
No, that's not true. I did actually respond to you. But my question is just, based on what you said tonight, which is the first time I'm hearing that part, is you're saying that this betterment policy, that's part of this policy, is for all betterments that we would offer?
That's the way that the attorney explained it to me.
Okay, so that's why I'm saying, so then, would it be prudent to then take this talk, this section that talks about the percentage?
Yeah.
And make it more specific towards the type? Or, you know, if everyone wants to just leave it at 75%, then that's fine too. But what I'm saying is, based on what you're saying, that that applies to every betterment, which would include the residents that are looking for improvements to their roads. That's my question. I just want clarification. It's not about throwing something out here that I didn't bring up before. I just want clarification based on...
All right, so I'm asking for clarification that, so betterments of different types, can we have different percentage amounts applied to those things? Is it within the council's discretion to... I mean, I guess it would be, make more sense to just sort of cleanly change 75% to 75% or an amount at the council's discretion?
But then it's, but then that's always, like, based on the people sitting at a table, right? So usually when you adopt a policy, you say, here's the policy. So when someone comes forward and wants to do something, you're like, it's 75%, 60%.
So...
So my question is, what I'm trying to understand is just whether this 75% and this betterment is directly related to a policy on petitions to accept private ways as public ways? And that will be 75%?
Yeah.
Or the betterment part of this policy, which you just said, applies to all betterments across the board? That's what I'm questioning, based on what you said to Jessica's question.
Okay.
So that's what I'm trying to understand, which way it is. So I'm not necessarily disagreeing that if someone's going to do a total re-layout of their road, that you might want 75% buy-in because that's like a major, could be a major cost.
Yeah.
I don't know if I'm making myself clear, but that's...
I mean, you're, I'm trying to figure out, what am I going back and asking the attorney?
I don't know if you're asking anything, because I don't know what everybody else is. I'm just trying to understand whether this betterment policy is related just to the policy we're going to adopt, or it would also be related to the, what the residents at Lake Thompson are asking for paving the roads up there? That's what I'm trying to understand. And until you answered Jessica's question, I was under the assumption that it was...
75%.
75% for this policy?
That I'll have to clarify. That I don't know, off the top of my head.
I don't know either.
I do know that in my conversation with the attorney, when we were trying to figure out what it was that you were looking for, they made it clear to me that things like betterments and even some street acceptances, that is entirely the people that are sitting here, and it is entirely the people that are making their petition. It's very circumstantial. Conditions can change, and discretion needs to be able to be applied because something might not, a blanket sort of, you know, this every single time policy might run into more challenges than what you're trying to do.
So why don't we put in a range? And then during certain circumstances, that range can be... At least if you're within that range, then you have leeway to go from one end to the other.
Sure.
Right, instead of just saying 75%?
Yeah.
I mean, I think, quite frankly, 75%, it... This is what you sat down with your attorney and whatever and figured out. 75% I think is a good, and...
Well, I mean, we didn't really discuss 75%. I think that was a number that they probably reviewed a bunch and saw that as the, you know, a majority number in a lot of other betterment language.
Yes, I'm trying to understand it better, the betterment itself, forgive me, but...
I don't do a lot of betterments, so I mean, I'm not like an expert in it.
Also for like, for the wastewater treatment thing? Is that something?
The wastewater treatment plant roof project?
Right.
Would not be a betterment.
Okay.
Yeah, now, a betterment is something...
I'm just saying, because I mean, I totally agree what her, what she was saying about, you know, the burden that's going to happen. You know, because everybody pays, whether you've got kids in school or not, for the schools on your taxes, so I totally, from the get-go, I have believed you. And I think I was the one that instigated with you.
But you voted for it, though.
No, I did not.
Yes, you did, the second round. Oh, yes.
I don't think so.
So...
Everybody did.
So, Phil, so a betterment is usually when there's some improvement that goes by your home. So if you'd wanted a sidewalk put in?
Right.
You would pay whoever was affected by that, could be, you know, so there's no sidewalk on the street, but I want a sidewalk. Not like a sidewalk that's getting repaired type thing that already exists. Or...
Got it.
A neighborhood petitions for sewer, a sewer, to be connected to the sewer. So that, all those costs to bring that neighborhood on the sewer system could be a betterment.
Like if the folks that lived on Stater Emory Street, you know, with public water, and they could have petitioned for a betterment to run a water line down their road, but they'd have to pay for it.
I'm going to defend you in a little bit, Phil.
Huh?
I've got some comments later.
That's all right. Just so I can rebuttal, because if I did vote yes, I'm sure it's because this project needs to happen.
We voted yes on the first loan. That's what we voted yes on. Not the additional two-point whatever.
Oh, I understand.
And that's what the contention's been.
So...
Probably going to be more than that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No.
I'm just...
Dave?
I think you asked and you answered the question.
Can you, nobody can, they won't hear you from home.
The microphone, yeah.
We put in additional microphones now, so I'm hoping everybody could be heard even.
My name's David Golden. I think you asked the question I was going to ask, and I think you answered it, but I just want to be clear because I read the policy today. And I walked away thinking that in order to get the betterment, you had to apply for this total improvement on the road where the buy-in. It didn't seem like two separate things to me. It seemed like you had to do a betterment to pay for the town accepting your road as public. So it didn't seem like there was a policy for us to have a betterment just to do what we want to do up at Lake Thompson. And I want to be sure that that does cover...
Yeah, I mean, that is clearly the conversation I had with the attorney. So, I mean, I will definitely circle back with him and verify that. But yeah, that is the purpose of having the betterment and the street acceptance. Yeah, because betterments can be minor or major.
Right.
Yeah.
But it seemed to me like it was, you did this betterment to pay for the acceptance of the roads, period. There was no betterment proceeds or a policy in there.
Yeah, let me get clearer language.
Well, that's how I read it. You've got to pay for it and do it.
I guess come up because we don't know for sure.
Yeah, and you're all the way back there, we're all the way up here. We don't have your microphone.
My name's Mike, Michael Mini, and I'm part of the Lake Thompson issue. As you know, we've been here since 2017, asking for our roads to just be consistently repaired. And we were happy with the repairs that the DPW were doing. But now with the new DPW director, again, things have fallen by the wayside. And then we've got potholes that are whole, whole bodies in them right now. And he's refusing to fix them. And I agree with David. I read this policy, and I'm not seeing how both issues are separated out, and it's hard to differentiate between the two. For me, you know, I just got this from you this morning, so I haven't really, you know, I've perused it a little bit, but I haven't read it word for word. But I don't see how it, you know, separates the two issues. It seems like they're somehow intermingled. You have to apply for, you know, the road adoption in order to get a betterment, is what I'm seeing here. I could be wrong. But about the repairs, I just wanted to say real quick that you may mention, Barbara, last month, that these roads need to be repaired. They can't be, and I forget the verbiage you used, but it was something to the effect that we can't just abandon the roads. Well, Matt's doing that. So who does he answer to?
Me.
So why can't you get him to use real asphalt? That stuff lasted for three weeks. We have repairs up there that have lasted for 10 years. He's saying it only costs $4,000 to go up there and fix all the potholes. That's de minimis compared to your budget. I mean, that's chump change, honestly. To go up there and repair three roads to make them safe for travel, for ambulances and fire apparatus and police cars, that needs to be done. But he's not doing it. And it seems like nobody wants to tell him, just go up there and do it. You kind of did last month. You said they got to be done, we can't just abandon them. And we were happy with the repairs. You know, we were content. Let me change that word. We weren't happy, we were content. But, you know, I mean, just, if you, we wouldn't be here tonight or last month if you...
Let me just say this, right? I can easily order Matt Morse to go and repair your roads to the same standards that Jerry Skoronek went and repaired your roads.
And his process.
Yeah, and his, whatever, right, yeah. Matt Morse is, in his mind, right? I'm not going to speak for him, but this is what I understand. He's trying to do things the right way. And, you know, I'm not an expert in road repair. I'm not an expert in, you know... materials that they use on road repairs and stuff, so Millings versus whatever, whatever, right? He is. And, you know, he felt that the previous way that it was getting done is not the proper way to do it. But, I mean, I, I, I can absolutely tell him to go back and do it the way that it was done before. If, if, if you folks were content with that.
We've said that on numerous occasions.
But, but I'm not entirely convinced that that, that is the right approach, so, uh, I will say this. I'm not gonna take forever, but let me take a week or so and investigate it. And if I come to the satisfaction that what the previous, uh, department heads did up there is kosher, then I'll have Matt Morse do that. But it's, I'm very reluctant to overrule my department heads because they are subject matter experts. I don't like to micromanage people. Um, but if there is something that is not working out, I will absolutely revisit it.
Like I said, the, the re, the Millings that he put up there, which are just used asphalt from other projects he had in town.
Sure.
And they grind them up and they put them down and they lasted for three weeks. If you go up there and, and look at the road, you'll see there's ten, twenty-year-old repairs that are still structurally sound. So his claim that, oh, they only last a month, they don't. He's not correct on that. You know, in, in his mind, Hitler thought he was right too. Honestly, but I, no, I'm just saying, in some, in someone's mind doesn't justify their perspective on it. It really doesn't. I mean, everybody.
Matt, I would be more than happy to go up there with you. I've been doing this my whole life, paving and.
That's Ryan.
Ryan, sorry.
Like I said, let me, let me look into it, uh, uh, and, um, I'm not making any promises.
I don't expect you to.
You know, may, maybe Matt's thinking the better way to do it. No, Matt, I was saying, is, is to, to do an overlay over the whole thing.
And we all agree with that, but the town doesn't wanna adopt the road. And now you're gonna make it impossible for us to get.
That's where the betterment would come into play as far as like saying to, uh, to do an overlay. I guarantee you would probably, well, I don't know, we just did. Yeah, I would say, we just did a, a small residential one.
A hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
That was like eight grand, just to, that was forty-something ton.
But what you're doing right now with this policy is you're putting the threshold at seventy-five percent and we will never get seventy-five percent. You had less than a thousand people vote for the new police station.
I get it.
A thousand people in town, and that was okay. But now you want people from a private road, which we don't want it to be private. We'd love for the town to adopt it, but you don't wanna. So you're putting us between a rock and a hard place.
Sometimes you can't, you can't adopt it because it has to meet certain criterias.
Well, what about all the other roads that are twelve feet wide in town? Did they meet the criteria?
Obviously, for, at that point in time, I guess.
So, I think we can just go around in circles on this. So he's gonna get back to you in a week or two. We're gonna get back to what we should do with this policy and.
But regarding the seventy-five percent, maybe a compromise between, you know, I was going for fifty percent because some of the towns like Mashpee do require a, a clear majority, fifty-one percent. But maybe that's too far in the other extreme. How about sixty? Sixty-five? I mean, that would be more reasonable than seventy-five percent. I just don't think that's feasible.
Um, I also, I looked into this with the DOR and Divisional Local Services, cause they, um, you know, have a kind of a scope of what's going on across the state and they have recommendations to cities and towns and they didn't have a recommendation for this specific, um, issue that we have here. Um, but I would, I would entertain maybe like a two-thirds vote.
I mean, that's a compromise.
Agree.
You know, I mean.
Matt.
So, does a betterment guarantee road acceptance?
No.
That was clear in that.
That, that's, that is exactly what I'm trying to, I just wanna throw that out there. I just wanna make sure that we're all aware.
I, I ran a sewer line, I mean, I didn't call it a betterment at the time. It was a Maxworth grant, but the businesses had to pay in. Um, that was part of the Maxworth application. So in function, it was like a betterment. So there were these businesses, they were chemical industrial, and they were actually operating off of septic systems. And the DEP said that, no, you have to connect to a public uh, wastewater facility treatment source. But they, you know, it was expensive. It costs nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars to run eleven hundred feet of sewer down that road. Um, so, but running that sewer, if that was not a, a road that was previously accepted by the town, we didn't have to accept it just by running the sewer down it.
And the butters would have to pay for any betterment.
Right.
Which is what we're talking about here. And we've met among our, amongst ourselves, and we're willing to do that. But by requiring us to, to get seventy-five, we can't get fifty percent of the residents to show up to a meeting about this issue. You know, so, I mean, for us to get seventy-five percent of them to agree at using your figures like forty-five hundred bucks total, four fifty a year, a hundred and twenty-five dollars or a hundred and twenty bucks for um, each quarter would be taken out of our taxes additionally for the project. Add it.
Mm-hmm.
Right, so, you know, I just don't wanna be put between a rock and a hard place, and I think that's what this will do to an extent.
Have you?
I mean, I, I, I just wanna, you know, I think the council is trying to create, uh, set of policies for the town wide, not necessarily just for Lake Thompson.
And I get that, and I understand that. And as you should, that's your job, you know, and thinking about that. You know, creating it for the whole town and trying to, you know, look into the future and see what may be coming up, but I think making people adhere to seventy-five percent. It does say approximately. It says a, a clear majority, approximately seventy-five percent on one of the policies in here, but I think you're gonna put yourself into a precarious position if you use that, you know, I think you might've said it, Ryan, where we can have a, a range.
You know, not. That was me. I brought it up. I just thrown it out there.
Having that range might, you're gonna upset one community, if not, you know, everybody. Because, well, you did it for Lake Thompson, oh, you didn't do it for me.
Well, that's the whole thing with.
That's the problem, right.
Whereas if you just say, if this is the type of betterment it is, this is the percentage. A road betterment is this percentage, an acceptance of a full is this percentage, a sewer betterment is this percentage, then it's in black and white, because you're right. Otherwise, it's gonna be like, well, Lake Thompson, we did sixty. And now we're telling the other, the next community it's seventy because the people, the faces at the table change. That's not right either. It should be a policy, it should be discussed, that's the whole reason, like, you know, a lot of times, yeah, I understand. It's frustrating for us too when we like look at things and we have conversations, but it's like what I may see at a, at home reading a policy and then somebody brings something else up and then I'm like, well, wait a second. I didn't notice that or I didn't think about that. And then that generates discussion. So sometimes things don't just happen in one meeting because, you know, and again, until Ryan answered a question a certain way tonight, I was reading this a different way. So, you know, that, that's just how things go. So i- it sounds like we need to probably do a little bit more research anyway for some of the questions, so that's not gonna be voted tonight. Um, and then depending on what the attorney says, this, this betterment policy might be directly related just to the policy that it's in.
Right.
That's what we need to find out.
Yep.
Just if I can just, I mean, your analogy that you brought up about a, a sewer and you know, kinda differentiating everything out per project, I don't think would work because a sewer project could be more expensive than a road project in certain si- situations.
That's what she's saying, you would need a bigger percentage.
Want a bigger percentage of people to buy into it.
Any on the money.
Right.
You might. I, I'm just, I'm just saying that's a policy.
Like a four thousand dollar project might only be forty percent. You know?
I just, I don't see that working, but.
Yeah, I, I, you know, again, I, I think until we get the answer to if, if this percentage is strictly for this policy or all policies, I think that's what we need to.
And I don't think, Ryan said he didn't broach that subject with the attorney, so. It may.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's something else I saw. Oh, there's, there's a section, um, where it talks about the ten years. So since you're asking questions, so it's section, um, thirteen. Uh, and it says, the duration of any betterment assessment, not to exceed ten years. You see that?
Yeah.
But then it says, or other period allowed by law, or otherwise advisable based on available rates, terms, law. I, I would just like clarification. So does that, when it says not to exceed ten years, is that saying the maximum is ten years, but we could do less if we needed to? I wanna make sure that if you, because there's a lot of times where you would wanna do twenty years.
Mm-hmm.
So I wanna make sure that that doesn't, uh, the way that's written. It just seems like it's saying not to exceed ten years.
And you wanna know if you can go to twenty?
Yeah, or should it just say not to exceed twenty years or other period allowed by law?
Sure.
Okay.
Can I just ask one last thing? But after this policy is done, do you then have Matt create a betterment policy for a, not policy, but a.
Cost estimate?
So that we can move on and determine that.
I mean, I think we can create a, a, an application sheet. I don't, I mean, I guess each sort of proposed betterment would have to get its own cost estimates.
So, the bet, the bet would be at our expense part of that? It would be included in that hundred twenty-seven thousand, if that's the number?
I'm sorry.
Does there, right, does there need to be a feasibility study of some sort? A cost study that the residents need to incur? Or they're asking, as soon as this is approved, can they get the cost estimate so that they can start their petitioning in their neighborhood?
I, I mean, the, I don't know. That's a great question. I, I don't necessarily know if I'm able to answer that right now.
But what did you have asked Matt last month to be prepared at this meeting with a betterment for us? If I'm not mistaken?
I don't know about that.
Well, I think, to your point, there needs to be a set of procedures that are set up. Once we have a policy, how does somebody go about getting a betterment? Cause that was gonna be my question, is what is, what is the procedure that goes along with this? So, you know, when there's a betterment that a section of the community is interested in, what do those folks have to do in order to approach the town? What does the application look like? Who are the points of contact? All of those steps.
The cost estimate.
Yep, yeah.
And so, and I, I know that, you know, sometimes, like I've seen where, you know, it's a simple enough project that there can just be an estimation of the project. But if there's engineering that needs to be done, then those costs are all added into the cost of the project. So if the town has to go out and get an engineer to design or do whatever, then that's gonna all be part of the project, so.
But that's something that can determine.
Or Ryan, yeah. Through Ryan, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know if we're gonna be able to have, um, hard and fast langu- I mean, in street acceptance, the language is usually pretty clear that it is all on the homeowners, right? You want your street accepted, you are basically buttoning it up for the select board or the, or the city council. Um, I'm not clear on betterments, so that is, it's a good question. I don't have the answer.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next is Stormwater Management Ordinance, first reading.
You're just reading the purpose and authority, right? Not the entire thing.
I'm just trying to get there. Okay, so this, the purpose of this article, which is chapter one forty-four, one forty-five Stormwater Management, is to better manage land development in order to protect, maintain and enhance the public health, safety and general welfare of the citizens of Palmer by establishing minimum requirements and procedures to control the adverse impacts associated with construction site, stormwater runoff and post-construction runoff. And then there'll be various criteria to meet those objectives. So that will, that's the first reading. So the next, uh, the next council meeting will be the second reading and the public hearing. Next we have, bless you, Stormwater Management Enterprise Ordinance. Oh, you have a question?
I did. This, uh, ordinance, whatever, it, it has impacts associated with construction site storm, which, is that not, like when somebody decides to build something, do they not already have to go through the plan and department?
Yeah, that's what this ordinance is. This is for the plant. This, this is what.
Oh, it's not the one, I'm sorry, it's not the one I'm thinking of.
They currently have three ordinances, uh, for, for this, so what we were doing is taking those three ordinances and combining them into one, uh, ordinance, so that, cause it got confusing when they were trying to reference three different ordinances.
Okay.
So, yeah.
This isn't the.
This is not the Stormwater Utility.
Okay.
That first reading is up next.
Okay.
So.
Oh, I got it. Sorry.
Either one of you, doesn't matter.
All right, didn't we do that years ago? Do all the stormwater drains and?
Combine sewer separation.
Yeah, and we have to do, oh, it's different than, okay.
This is the presentation we had a couple of meetings ago where tie and bond came in, and this is the runoff from buildings.
Your roof, your doors, your driveway.
With any, right, so this is.
Be taxed on it.
Yes.
Well, this one is just how it's going to be, how we're going to a, uh, address stormwater runoff into, into whether it's rivers, streams, et cetera.
Yeah, but this is about.
Groundwater.
Your driveway, you pay more and.
Right, well, that's, so that's, that's the next one.
Still go in the ground?
Yeah, so this, this is just like Phil was pointing out. Construction, post-construction, right? So you have to put in rain gardens. Uh, we take stormwater bonds, um, from applicants now, like, so I'm, I'm just, it's, when Dollar General went in on Route twenty, right, we took a bond from them. Greg LaScotti was the developer. He had to put in certain, um, mitigating features for the stormwater management. Uh, and so this just clarifies those rules so that there, the planning board is not going from this ordinance to that ordinance trying to figure out which one applies. We just, we have one now.
Yeah.
Um, the next thing, the, the utility.
Hold on, so this is, this is the, so we had actually appropriated money to have tie and bond, combined all the ordinances, and this is the result of that. So.
Okay, but does that include if you have a big roof, you pay more in taxes?
This is the next ordinance coming up.
That's the next one.
That's the one, can we vote now and say no?
This is a first reading.
This, this is a first reading for, sort of like when we did the police station, how you got the, the pond there with the.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's why I was like, I thought it was already.
So, my quick question is, does the, do the stormwater, um, ordinances, do they tie into our MS four requirements? Or is that totally something separate?
No, they, they, yeah, it all, it all ties in. Yeah. Yeah, and then, and this, this MS four, I mean, everything that we do ties in. The testing on State Street and Emery Street from the landfills. We just got a letter from DEP increasing our testing requirements because now we test for PFAS. It's gonna be extraordinarily expensive. Um, we just got our new NFTs permit for the wastewater treatment plant. All kinds of new testing and reporting requirements. Now, they're not, thankfully, all gonna be triggered on December first when we get the new permit. Some things will be triggered halfway through twenty twenty-four. Some things will be triggered in twenty twenty-six when the, when the language gets finalized by the state. Um, but it's becoming more onerous. Everything is becoming test more for more things. And it's all a mandate.
Unfunded mandate.
Yes.
That's always.
The, the, yeah, they're, they're always gonna be under unfunded mandates from now on.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Everybody good? Okay. Next is Stormwater Management Enterprise Ordinance. This is the first reading. So the purpose of this ordinance is the Stormwater Management Program is a federal mandate designed to promote the health and safety of the public, to protect property from flooding and the damage caused by stormwater runoff, and to protect and manage water quality by controlling the level of pollutants in stormwater, stormwater runoff and the flow of water as conveyed by man-made and other natural storm management systems and facilities. So this, um, this ordinance will, um, determine criteria to establish fees to deposit into an enterprise fund to cover the costs of stormwater management. So, we'll do it. Okay. So that's first reading. So that's first reading, so the second reading and the public hearing will be at our meeting in November. Any other new business? Subcommittee reports. Town manager report.
Uh, thank you. I don't have anything specific I wanna call out in my town manager report, so I will just enter it into the record. Unless you guys have any questions about something in my town manager report.
Do you have any questions?
No.
Miss Laney's correspondence. I did receive um an email regarding um the. Christmas decorations that were stored at Converse Middle School, but that seems to have been taken care of very quickly. Um, so I don't think there's a need to discuss. And Counselor's Roundtable.
I just have comments. Just my feedback. Appreciate the passion, appreciate feedback. Um, as far as being prepared and doing research, we usually have one business day and then a weekend. A lot of questions come up here based off answers as you heard tonight, right? So there's not always a, can't ask Ryan all the questions before the meeting. There's a lot of dialogue happens. We're not allowed to meet uh outside of these chambers. With a quorum to even discuss or come up with responses. Um, as far as the loan vote, we voted on that loan, the first loan, knowing that that was already included in the rate study that was presented. Which was the ten percent compounded every year, ten percent, ten percent, ten percent, ten percent. That didn't include the additional, which probably is gonna add more to that. So. There was a very contentious discussion because that's a big overage and we don't know what that impact is. Uh, we didn't have it in writing that Voucher Town or Munson had to pay. And I know that Voucher Town probably doesn't have that. I know we're just gonna take the money, I don't know how that works, but. Um, as far as, if you were referring to our discussion on Chase. Cause I was the one that put that out there.
That was the, the point.
Okay, well, my defense anyways is that we present a vision. And we work with who we can to put certain pieces in place so that we can come back and discuss it. At that last meeting, I was asked to present a plan, which to me sounds like I'm designing a track. So that's not me. That's town manager, D P W, whoever, engineers, I've offered to bring help in, that hasn't happened. You know, I do hope that more people would come out and question why things. Have fallen by the wayside for so long, and yeah, we are stuck with it. Uh, we are stuck with trying to take care of a lot of failing infrastructure. Septic, the sewer is just one. Um, you know, I do pay sewer. I'm gonna end up paying a thousand dollars to flush my toilet, just like you. So. And I know this work has to get done. It's, how do we pay for it? That's really the question, right? Um, I would wish that if there was a lot of, you know, and there's always public snipers out there and animosity towards decisions or discussions or. You know, not everyone's gonna agree on what the right investment is at the right time. Uh, whether, you know, if it's failing infrastructure or if it's new, whatever, no one's questioning that. There's a lot of new things happening in town and there's a lot of uh new development and whatnot. No one's challenging Ryan on any of that. I think some of the stuff that we've questioned, and I think a good example we talked about was the fencing last month. Was, we do know we have to replace fencing. Now, last month, our last meeting, uh, was it the second meeting we had where we talked about Converse? We talked about Converse twice last month. There's a potential new development opportunity where maybe we don't wanna put the crappiest, strongest, nice, ugliest looking fence there, right? So that was one question that we took back, right? Cemetery fencing, there's a lot of tree work that has to happen before we just go throwing fences up, right? Cause then they're just gonna get smashed again. And walking through that property, you can also see that there's a lot of trees smashed behind the fence. Like right behind the fence, like it was put there during cleanup or whatever, right? So all that stuff. That, that's a lot of the things that we questioned last month. Um, but. You know, I do appreciate everybody coming out and providing feedback and whatnot. But there's always more than what's presented, is all I'm trying to say. And that's not just directed at anybody here in the room. But I think.
No, we're, we're not gonna get the back and forth. Anybody else for?
Ed, I wanna say, thank Ryan for the, the hard work he did bringing that money forward. From uh.
Thomas Buttner.
Buttner, Butt Hick Road.
So it's gonna be hard to rename.
No, you got that little side street there.
Oh, okay.
The one, it's a one-way, is it, maybe even? Anyways, but thank you for all your hard work there. I was actually born at the Wing Memorial. I've been in this town my whole life. And again, thank you for all the hard work that you have been doing. I've never thought in my lifetime, I used to go and buy fishing lures at Johnny Liza X's place. And then it turned into what it is. And now we sit here and, and seeing all the new development happen that. I, I figured I'd pass away before that place ever. It got mowed down or cleaned up or whatever. So thank you, cause you don't get the thank yous like you should sometimes. You know, we, we sit here and we bicker back and forth or whatever, but I do appreciate all the hard work that you've been doing. And. You know, I used to work at all the factories. I've seen everything die out and to see all this new stuff coming in is really good.
Thank you.
And I also agree with this young lady. I would love to see somehow that the wastewater. Again, I don't have no children in school, but I pay taxes for the school. I don't use the library, but I pay taxes for the library. And that, to me, is probably the one time that. The whole town should be a whole town and pay for a project, not just burdened on everybody. And then, you know, within a couple of weeks, you're gonna wanna start doing a stormwater new tax thing. That I don't believe in also, you know, state, whether it's a good idea or not. Which I think it is, but you, you forcefully are making people pay more money, whether. Somebody wants, I think when we were talking, saying, well, i- it's really not that much more money that someone's gonna have to pay for. What comes out of the sky onto my roof and into the road and into that pipe. I- it's just the constant nickel and dime to play, to where, okay, now. I am spending more than thirty percent to pay for my mortgage because everything else has gone up. And i- it's not, you know, they, they call it your golden years. Well, I'm getting there and I don't have that pot of gold. That they talk about, you know?
Well, I think we'll definitely be talking about that more when we have our public hearing next month.
Yes, I had the privilege of going to another um Eagle Scout. Um, graduation or promotion, whatever you call it. And they went through it a different way. They went through the uh. Oh, I wanna pronounce it right. Well, a different way to, to uh get adventure uh scouting way, which is unique. And Alex and Miss Day uh did it that way. And one of the biggest things of all, not to take away from Alex, cause it's a hard thing to accomplish. And if you go put that on your resume, boom, you usually get the job, cause they know uh they work hard. Miss Day is the first female to ever get it in Palmer. So that'll be in the records forever.
I congratulate them, they're awesome.
Um, the, the Eagle Scout Quarter of Hon- Court of Honor that Counselor Williams and Counselor Voy. And Representative Smola, State Senator Olivera, and myself attended uh was for uh Jacob.
Yeah, oh boy, yeah. A fine young man.
Yes, Javorski, sorry, man, I just literally blanked at the last minute. Alex Javorski.
How could I forget that? Yeah.
Thank you.
And they all do projects and everything.
Yeah, he did a great project for the town.
Yep, yep. Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thirteenth World is open, come on down visiting. Oh, boy.
Anybody else? Do you have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Good night.